January the 19th meeting, today is January the 15th. So we'll call this one to order. And we have a couple of presentations on here before we go to the agenda. First up is going to be Mr. Kemp. He's going to give us an update on the projects from 2020 and their status, and then provide us with an update on or the projects planned for this coming year. So Terry, go right ahead.
Thanks Mayor and Board. And before I get into this, and as Mayor said, what I intend today is to kind of give you a snapshot of what we are on some significant issues that we've been dealing with in Starfield for right now where we are at completion, but also give you a little glimpse of where we're headed for this next full year. To separate loads, here again minimizes the impact on everybody, so I think we can have much more.
Mention a little bit Terry about the impact on like Southwire, how critical that is?
That's okay, that's right. And you know, and what we did, we focused it on trying to do that, but also address some of our industrial loads, not only current loads, but growth. Southwire is a very important load, like all of our industry, but they're sensitive. As a result of this, we're actually, we'll be feeding Southwire out of what we consider now an industrial sub. And so they'll be kind of on a direct feed from this station, which here again produces their reliability. And if you'll remember, that was an issue that we talked about about a year ago when Southwire actually came to the table and partnered with us, providing cag loading, so we could do a lot of underground work over there on their side. So it's a huge push, and I think they're excited, and we work with them almost weekly now, bringing it close to that. And for all practical purposes, that's where we are. You'll see the switch house over here on your right. And what's going on right now, this week, this is kind of some important dates to remember. We're shooting for energizing that station Tuesday and February the 5th. So we're close. And then what everyone's focused on is making these last connections, testing circuits, phasing, all of that thing. And believe me, there's a lot of connection points they've been working on for months over there to pay for all that. So 5th is a big date for us, that's when Tuesday we heat that station up. And then the next morning, probably by 7:00 a.m., we're working with Southwire. We talked earlier, there'll be just a momentary interruption on some of our customers to allow that shift from the old Southwest to now the current unit we're just building. We will be doing a lot of switching on our system to minimize that impact as much as we can, so we'll minimize.
When you say just a minute or two minutes, or you think, you know, how long it was shut down?
We're telling them about five to ten minutes. And here again, we'd like to move faster than that, but it's just some work. We've got to create some switches, put on different brokers and things like that. But it won't be an extended interruption. And so we're working on that because they did production that time in Williams. Some of our other industrial loads, we plan to shift them over from a different circuit and keep them isolated from that. Maybe where you're, some of the areas down on Southwood Gummery are intense to kind unload as much of that as we can too. Here again, we're insensitive, but we can't pick it all up until we get all of the new substation up and everything else. So we'll have new circuits coming out, and so we're going to be spending some time reading on that over the next two weeks. After that occurs, we'll start breaking our loads.
Will that little outage be maybe after 8:00 a.m. give it time to get to worms, the ones that are?
It's a Saturday.
It's a Saturday, that's even better.
And right now, we're targeting, and here again, we're targeting, so as we get closer, we'll make sure everybody knows, but right now, from a production is pumping around 7:00 a.m.
Okay, and we've done all this in-house, so.
That's right.
So your plan is to separate all the industrial from homeowners?
A large extent for Southwire's benefit. Now, some of the others would not, you know, they're fit into it, but we're looking at that industrial feed, it's, you know, call it an industrial substation, and for all practical purposes, it's going to be service Southwire. And what that does is their operation, they're real sensitive, so if they were to see an operation over on the other side of town, you know, their voltage with SAG, they see that, so they're isolated. So we really address reliability back to that point, focus on our industrial customers.
Okay. Any other questions from the board about electric? Alderman Carver, I know you're on the line. Do you have any questions from Terry about the electric?
No ma'am.
Okay.
No ma'am, thank you.
And just so, I did mention, after that occurred, we've got about two weeks, we'll be a lot of work going over there, putting people on different circuits. You shouldn't be seeing any of that, but then we'll be kind of in a position of normal operating. And so it's going to be a huge benefit to our climate, but it makes it much more easier. But we'll keep everybody posted on when that day, but that's kind of what we target. As we go forward after this, what's next? We've already ordered the auto transformer, so we'll be monitoring the primary station this fall. And then after that's completed, that'll be the last major component in the substations. We'll be pulling overhead ground wire, fiber, fiber loop from this new station all the way back to the primary through Mississippi State, and that will be the second phase of that. And then looking at the next step now, when we get this in place, it gives us more flexibility to start making the system a smarter, faster switching. Here again, it's all about reliability, that's the ramp down.
Mr. Kemp, how many stations and substations do we have altogether? How many stations and substations do we have altogether?
Four. Four. And it will maintain with four with, and then really we'll go to kind of a five then, because we'll have an industrial sub as well. So we'll still have four, primary, northeast, northwest, southwest, and then we've got the industrial sub. And we feed Mississippi State directly into one of their substations, they're direct, but they feed directly into a substation they own. But I think the city will be well served for this many, many years after.
Right, this is part of our effort to plan for well into the future.
That's right, that's right. So, and it helps our customers now that I'll do it, but definitely have some dealers going forward. Water Division, another big project that we're kind of close to finishing. I've been involved in that for many years. If you'll remember, this kind of alleviates the need for the lagoon. We'll be using a screw press. It is a sustainable type operation, so actually we'll be running sludge through this equipment. And that's the screw machine right in the middle, just to kind of give you a picture of it. And then out of that will be a Class A product for less than a topsoil or dirt. It's not used for compaction. We're working very closely with Mississippi State, but you don't want to store it for a long period of time. This is a continuous operation. The greenhouses, you'll see notice right there, that's where the drying will occur. It'll come through the screw press into the greenhouses, dry, and then we'll actually note it. And an item on the agenda today is to replace equipment to actually handle a lot of that product through that process.
Mr. Kemp, tell them where you get that piece of equipment from.
Germany, I think, it was, or we say, we ran into a little issue because when everything's slowed down from international, but that's where that came from. And there's two little road boxes about as big as those tables, or any of those tables that actually work all of the sludge inside of the greenhouses, so we just kind of call it a model. We're just taking completion on that on February the 28th. So here again, another big.
February is a big month for us.
Big long, and then after that, and that'll be after we've got two weeks of casting, but then we'll be producing product. And then here again, we're talking Mississippi State has disposed, we're trying to figure that, how much we still, but here again, I think it'll be a real good thing, a long time for the city. The disc rotors in the top are added into that project, it's a million dollar add, but it talked about our oxidation ditches. You know, we had failed rotors, so this allowed us to put brand new ones in right now, and so we're in really good shape on that area. And Thomas and he proved, and Westmore, they do an excellent job for us every day.
Who the closest, the closest plant, what, where did Thomas say the closest plant, what they have, this here?
What this, they've got one in Natchez, and they've got one on the Gulf Coast. It's a little bit different structure, but there's a few out there, but not many.
Again, we're leading the way.
Yeah, yeah.
But it will be nice to get rid of that lagoon eventually. Plans not to do it quickly, but you know, it'll slow these, it's laying down, but it takes pressure off of continuing to put things into the lagoon by using this operation. And then let's talk about the other big issue that's been working on for several years is on the water division, would be the sewer and water rehabilitation. And just to shorten out, Pleasant Acres from infrastructure is complete. We still are holding the contractor till about fall, when he'll be working with, in the area for his grass and cleanup and stuff on that ore. But the infrastructure is good, performing extremely well, and my sense is that as we continue to get, is to heal, I think someone has said, you know, that dirt is healing, the customers are seeming to be very happy with it. We are pleased too, but we threw that one, and now we're moving into the next, which was Green Oaks, we talked about earlier, phase one and phase two. So phase two basically fits into Douglas MacArthur, Avenue of Patriots, and Plough.
Points north, north from Douglas MacArthur, right?
North, so that's kind of the boundary line, and that covers that part of Green Oaks. It's about 3.5 miles of sewer. We focused on sewer because that was one of the bigger issues that we needed to deal with. So we do the 3.5 miles. We're going to be doing the product, I'm going to show you in a few minutes. 250 residents are going to be impacted in this group. We tentatively are hoping to start work, that project's been awarded, late February with completion in September. Of the 3.5 miles, there are 93, we say manholes or point repairs, so about 93 properties of that 250 would have some work done above ground. Most of this would actually be underground. And we're going to be using the new technology that I thought I showed you, you may be familiar with it. But if you see the blue, basically it's, well, what it is, the infrastructure in Green Oaks is big enough, it's deep enough, and it's still good enough to actually, we're going to boil liner inside the existing pipes. So they'll bring that equipment into the side, put it in, push it down the pipe, heat it up, and it formed a pipe on the inside, that we've actually got 75 years for that. So it won't be an excavation. Here again, it's because the pipes are large enough right now, they're to depth we need to do that, and so this is a good product right here. So hopefully be less disruptive to the customers themselves.
Does that mean it'll be quicker? Will it go quicker because of that?
It should be a lot quicker, especially on the cleanup, if we can get through. Some coast is a contractor, he does this, it's not very many contractors, but we've worked with them in the past. We were very confident about his ability to get this done.
Is that like a, is that the actual pipe that roll a roll, like a pliable?
It is, it is. It's a piece of tube plastic, they blow it in, and then they'll pee it in air, blow it out, and it forms inside of that. So if I look on the top right here, you can see, see the blue?
Like a liner?
Mm-hmm.
How thick is that? I just can't.
I can't, but I'll get you the answer. This area right here.
That's pretty cool.
Right here, this would be a good example.
Mr. Kemp, were there undulations?
And that would be the new.
Were there undulations, you know, dips and stuff? Does it smooth out for flow, or is it, was it corrected, where you got a dip or something?
If we have to do some point repair, if something's fallen, we talked about those others are point repair, or some lines that have to be adjusted. But that's going to be, we've already got plans, we've inspected it, we've got engineering drawn, so we know we're going to.
So you go in, ask them to repair those, dig in, repair those?
And if, what did I say earlier, 93 locations on people's property, we might have to do something with a manhole, go in and replace a section of pipe, and to dress things like that. I think there were four or two areas that we needed to change the elevation. And all of that's been factored in based on our TV that we did and engineering study.
Because as soon as gravity all lifted out, it's part.
Gravity, it's all gravity. So we're down the bottom side, worst side, and it's kind of working from the north back to the south, and gravity is kind of.
We use that same type of material over at Pleasant Acres?
No.
We didn't?
Pleasant Acres, we.
That's an old one.
The pipe was close to the same type product, because we didn't go back with concrete or that type pipe. We moved up to a better grade of pipe, but we use a totally different technology, we just bought silver pipe, very different handling.
Mr. Kemp, for older duck line, oh, duck line, whatever, when you're getting to 78 year old stuff, can you still do that, or you have to replace it?
If it hadn't failed. And that's what we did, a lot of technical work, engineers were in site, you have to really drill down to make sure the integrity is good enough and it's not collapsed. Now, those areas that have failed, they need to be pulled out and then just put a new pipe in place of that. And what this will work is that you'll run through that, and then customers will be impacted for a short period of time, because we're wanting to address those service levels, but then that'll be back in service fairly quickly.
So when that tube blows up, it's got, it becomes structurally sound, or yes?
And you've only got a few hours after they put it in, put it in with those parts. So it's an operation.
So it's, it'll be strong and avoid collapses in the future? That's pretty cool.
All right, let me give Alderman Carver a chance. Alderman Carver, do you have any questions of Mr. Kemp, particularly since Green Oaks is your board?
I don't. I just want to thank Mr. Kemp and his staff for keeping me informed, who took your time in Green Oaks, and just to be remembered. Toward the end of the term, that this is one of the things that this board can be remembered for, one of our legacies is taking these pretty giant steps forward and being proactive instead of reactive, and making the decisions that brought that to fruition. But just to thank Mr. Kemp again, and his staff for what they've done so far, and what we're doing here in the near future, so thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, Terry, go ahead, sorry.
2021 plans, that's a big start. Now we've been out, we're rolling on this. We're also still continuing to investigate sewer issues in three and four, so that was the next phase. We've got our TV trucks there, doing engineering studies to figure out how we transition from this to that location. And we're also doing a good bit of field investigation and data gathering in Rolling Hills, which is another identified major problem for sewer. So here again, it's all about trying to get your good data in front, come up with good plans, and then start stacking them in as we are ready to start making the corrections. So from a sewer standpoint, that's kind of where I'm giving you an idea of where we're headed. Now, there's some unique lines in all around town, they're not going to be left out either. So I know we've got some that we're going to be breaking out, but you know, we started this kind of looking at it in groups, and we're staying in that kind of that same format, but emergencies come pop up, and we're going to take care of that as well. There's two water projects, it's not huge water projects in this year. One's going to be on Northern Gummery, we've talked about earlier, that we hope to start sometime this spring. And Ellen's on Harlem, that connection over there, that we're working very closely with streets and other infrastructure.
Atlas, yeah.
On that one. But we're hoping both of those deal with water problems that we've had for a long time, and we're going to try to address those, at least by some of them, to look back on those. Still a lot to work on, and if we look down the road, we can talk another hour on things that we need.
Well, and before I let you go on sewer, are we currently evaluating Rolling Hills?
We're doing, we've done, like we've done, we've already gotten the manholes, and that, so we've already identified locations of manhole, went in on inspections, and now we're starting to do the TV work.
Okay, all right, but we are working Rolling Hills, so it'll be right after Green Oaks?
That's correct. Here again, we've got most of that information, and we'll be starting really. The investigation takes a good bit of time, so yes, Mayor, that's what we're doing.
Okay, thank you.
Operations center, we talked about that, that's underway. If you've been by, you're seeing some construction, weather's slowed it down a little bit. That's going to be a great operation benefit to us and all our people, kind of one location, communication teamwork, and I think it's really nice. We're still looking for anticipation, anticipating that being completed this summer, so we're on track. They're moving inside the building right now, because we wanted to reconfigure that to support more of a team environment, and so we put engineers and operations together and make better use of that space.
And you're looking at March, no, April or May?
We're looking for, right now, we were hoping to have it in by May. With the weather, the contractor is getting still in, we're saying right now, it may slip a month or so, but we're still pushing hard for this, having this on.
Okay.
And it's not just about capital products, I thought I just mentioned a little bit about customer service that we've worked on, these couple of things, and where we're headed on that too. So it's about having a good product, but working with our customers as well. We did put the through phone system in, that just gives you a snapshot of the last six months to give a feel for the volume that we're working with. We've got about 20,000 phone calls, and it's about two minutes per call, and so that tells you about the volume of it. We've got some techniques I'm going to show you going forward, we hope to kind of address that, but that was a huge upgrade. And it goes in spikes, you know, when we said average of 114 days per call, some days it'll be three times, I think, on one day, if there's really a lot of activity, because we're busy, and other days it'll be a lot less. We've updated the website, and it's all driven by a flexibility of the customers. Now, actually, customers can go, my own client, fill out all of their forms, but they never have to send us any paper. And that's something we've been working on for a long time, to try to alleviate the faxing and confusion, so I think I'm going to take your business right from the website. And it's, it's real active in the fact, it's given them a lot of options as well, so we're excited about that. AMI system, we've been working on it for something that's completely finished, implementation was completed on water and sewer, which really has a direct impact on our billing. We have moved to due date, will be the same due date for the foreseeable future, at least the next 12 months, and then we may be adjusting as we have to, but I think that's what customers wanted, they said if you keep the due date signed, it moves one of things, and our AMI system allows us to do that. App and portal, we're seeing a huge increase in that, use of that, and we'd like to encourage customers to really take advantage of that, because here again, it's easy to do business there, because you can do alerts and reminders. I know we've asked some questions, you know, about working on bill and whatever else, we've found out these techniques really alleviate stress, and sometimes the customers, if they're looking for data, they'll put it right there on their phone, on their computer, however they prefer to do it, and then get the bill when it shows when it gets there, so it's an option. But a lot of people, Mayor, can own the papers and save you $2 per month, so that's what we did, we created you $2 if you want to go through the papers type thing. 2021, we're headed, we're continuing to do and strengthen the contact information, so you'll start seeing much more communications by email and text, that's what the customers are wanting. And with the format of AMI, which allows us to move forward to an outage management system, it'll be tied to addresses, so then we can identify, you know, problems at that location, but then also can communicate directly to that individual. So we think that'd be another enhancement to give them speedy response if they have a question.
Okay.
And that's it.
All right. Any, any questions from anyone of Mr. Kemp? Anyone? Alderman Carver, any questions?
No ma'am, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. And Terry, I do want to say that, you know, over the last, since this, since this board started during the four years that we've worked, I have noted dramatic change in the number of complaints and calls and concerns. There have been some, you know, there continue to be things that you will always have in an operation as large as that. But the customer service aspect has improved greatly, the responsiveness has improved greatly, and I want to commend you for focusing on that, because it makes a difference to the community, so thank you very much.
Thank you, that's what we try to do when we break it out, because we get on projects, but that's just as important to us too. And here again, the last thing I'd say, if you have to, they've got a question or concern to the college, you know, we're going to put it on list, and we should be calling back to the end of the day. We may be here at 7 o'clock at night or eight, but we might call back, so thank you for those comments too.
Thank you so much, appreciate it. All right, and next we have the chief, who is going to present us some fun stuff. Brendan has got the, he's got the new body cams to do a show and tell, so the chief is going to share that, and he's also going to update us on the code enforcement and operations of that. But the body cam was something that was kind of special, I didn't realize we were going to be able to see that until this morning, so it's pretty cool.
Yes ma'am, thank you Mayor and the board. You know, no tool is more important for law enforcement right now than the ability to capture events when they take place in a real-time manner. And body cameras and body worn cameras and car cameras are the, obviously, the future of law enforcement. What we've got is a presentation concerning body worn. While it's not the lowest bid, we feel that this is the best bid that fits our needs. And this agreement, it's a total turnkey solution. It is based up on unlimited cloud storage, which has been issued in the past with previous videos. It allows for unlimited users, so as we grow and expand, I think that that's important. It's got 24/7 tech support. It also provides for refreshment of our camera systems at a 37-month agreement, and that includes all training and installation, and any and all software updates if they're applicable. So that is some of the hidden costs that through our experiences of technology, we've been continually burned on in the past. And so this is a turnkey solution at a five-year mark. But, and we have a video for you, but I think that before we go into the video, let's take to the next slide. Right here, okay, this is important for a few reasons. This is from President Johnson with the NAACP at the national level. They endorse the concepts with body worn, and I think that's important, because it provides the transparency that people want, the public safety, and provides the accountability that people want. And this system has a lot of stuff, you're going to hear in the video, but I'd like to plant the seed, so when you see it in the video, you understand where it's coming from. It provides an officer down, emergency learns capability, and what that means is, if I go parallel down to the ground, if I've been knocked out, which has happened to our officers that have searched before with a suspect, where we lost him, and we had to go in, he'd been knocked out for several moments. and we had to go, and he'd been knocked out for several moments, this system allows us to know where is that, what's going on. If you have been, obviously, a heart attack, we had an officer saved in North Carolina, had a heart attack and went down. So when the officer goes down, it has an alert system to let you know that officer's parallel, something's not right here. Obviously, in our day-to-day activities, that's something that, not the position you're in. It does have the capability of holster activation and alert. So if I go to unload my holster, it can alert our systems and, hey, look, someone just took out the weapon. It has foot pursuit activation and alert. So if beyond a normal walking rate, if I'm to take off and also engage in a pursuit, it automatically backstates two minutes on our body worn cameras. It allows for a direct feed. So let's say I've got, obviously, throughout law enforcement, retention has been the issue. We're getting younger, but if Mr. Latimer here was a suspect, were to take off running, right, as a senior officer on the other side of town, I could see Mr. Latimer's face and advise, officer, slow it down, we know who this individual is. There's no longer a need to engage in that pursuit. It's amazing technology. We have the ability to upload without docking stations, immediate access to video and field like we just talked about, and remote activation, as well as internal GPS with customizable geo offenses and historical tracking. What that is explaining, if I've got a complaint, let's say, Alden Vaughn up on the Henderson Hill area or Lowell Meadow subdivision, we're getting complaints within our community that they never see an officer or we need more officers. This geo fencing allows us to circle and not only show the amount of officers coming through their times, but the ability to be able to track the routes in which they were going into those areas. Because many times we get that, that our officers are 24 hours a day, seven days a week, so many times when the citizens are asleep and I see an officer, the officer be there. And this is what provides that capability. So with that being said, that hits on it, I wanted to plant that. As we go into this video presentation, it's about three minutes long, and I'll be glad to answer any questions afterwards.
Body worn provides a fully integrated officer and vehicle ecosystem for video capture, upload, redaction, and sharing. It leverages intelligent technology to ensure the officer is never asked to do something technology can do for them. We start with the body worn camera, which is securely mounted in the uniform. As the officer gets into their patrol car, body worn automatically associates with the Rocket IoT in the trunk. Now, the officer and vehicle cameras, including triggers, are synchronized based on policy. During a traffic stop, a series of triggers automate the Rocket IoT and body worn to begin recording and offloading video. The digital media evidence automatically offloads and is temporarily stored in the Rocket IoT. When the officer returns to any department and station, video is quickly offloaded to the cloud through the system's smart waypoint. Individual officers or groups of officers in the field can receive real-time BOLO alerts on their body worn or in-car video systems. During a foot pursuit, body worn sensors automatically trigger the device to begin recording. As an officer unholsters their firearm, body worn will activate recording while sending real-time alerts to dispatch. Additionally, it will capture two minutes of pre-event recording to ensure all critical evidence is captured. In a high priority event, the digital media evidence can offload to the cloud automatically using the cellular network. Because seconds mean lives, intelligence matters. This includes intelligence that allows the system to integrate to the department's computer aided dispatch system. When a 911 call is placed, an officer is assigned. Body worn and Rocket IoT vehicle video will automatically activate when the officer arrives on scene, tagging it with all relevant information for that call. Body worn has an added layer of officer safety protection. In the event that an officer goes prone, the ecosystem automatically senses and sends alerts to officers within proximity and dispatch, enabling them to respond quickly. Dispatch and other assigned parties are able to view a live streaming feed of officer's body worn camera. The system's mutual aid capability allows multiple agencies to share BOLO alerts for emergencies and other life safety situations, thereby creating entire networks of smart cities for emergency response through AvailWeb. Meanwhile, AvailWeb allows departments to view and manage all digital media evidence with rich interactive media playback, reporting capabilities to support day-to-day operations, and case management for operational efficiency. In order to respond promptly to video release requests, we've built in smart redaction to quickly automate the redaction process. In a few short moments, digital evidence cases can be shared to the district attorney and local news outlets. A dedicated lawyers portal allows the DA to access media from all agencies within their district. A temporary link can be provided to a news station for limited access. Body worn, promoting officer safety while building trust between law enforcement and the community.
Cool. And when do we expect to get those to live and up and running?
It's February, the later part of February?
Within nine days. We ask before we're just starting.
And I'll pass this around. This is, as we see it, I think the mistakes made, this is not just a simple cell phone. This is a really advanced computer that looks like a cell phone, but it's a technology that, obviously, our younger generation is very dialed in with. But they can pull it out, they can take pictures on the scene, they can turn it into, let's say they're not sure they've got the right video, they can view it right there without having to go to the docking station and see what they've got if they need to advance it. This is also important. This is going to be a little bit different, so whether you're talking about a shirt or vest or whatever we wear, this is important. The other night, I had the opportunity to go to JPD's New Fusion Center, and they showed some video of officers, and they had an officer bob shooting with that, originally, over illegal parking, the female officer was talking and long so short, it just went bad really quick. But the whole camera, because of the camera position, all we got was the top of gas tanks. And that is very common, whereas if you think about how evolution is taking place with the camera systems as we're learning more, you see you plant a camera on, well, it doesn't necessarily reflect, like, you're going to be fighting, you're going to be running, there's going to be a lot of activity, so that camera, many times you hear the audio, but you don't get to see. But this here, it's very slightly placed and you have 140 degrees, so you can get the visual that you're looking for each and every time, and they're pretty jammed in there. I've spoken with Gulfport, I've spoken with Warren County, who actually, the sheriff there was the one through a conference that brought us on to this type of technology, and they've had really good feedback from it. So it's not something that necessarily is new in Mississippi, but a lot of these agencies that are really making the effort, that unfortunately, have lost officers and a lot of guilty officers bob shootings are making the play that this is the system that they feel very good in.
Cool. Thank you, Chief. Any questions of the chief about this, about this product? I heard something. Our Alderman Sistrup, I think you're on now too, aren't you? Or not? Okay.
Hey, Mayor, I'm going to use my stuff.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you for being here. Have a good day and a good weekend.
Yes, ma'am. You too, thank you.
Prevent a lot of lies being told.
That's, it's, yeah, it's going to, it's going to make what happened very available to everyone. So, okay, all right, thank you. All right, Chief, go ahead.
Joel, do you have anything to add?
I'll just add that we've worked with the chief and Sergeant Lovelady in the department for some time vetting these various body camera systems. It's been a very thorough process. We helped with the grading of the vendors as they, as they made their presentations. Scott Dries, our network administrator, spent a lot of time with Sergeant Lovelady meticulously going through the process of vetting these technologies. And from a technology perspective, it's very impressive and it has our wholehearted sample approval.
Okay, all right.
Chief, I had a quick question.
Yes, sir.
So when an officer comes on duty, they're going to be responsible for keeping these things charged up, I guess, you know, at home or whatever. What's, what's the, are there some kind of failsafe where, you know, when they report that you would know you don't have it on, or you know what I'm saying? Or is there something to check that?
Right. Do the inspection, do the supervisor, same with our tasers, our current systems and everything. It's heavily relied upon in inspections and they are, they know it's a top priority. So even with our current system, if something goes down at 1:00 in the morning, supervisor's notified, we're documenting, hey, video's down, we're not waiting for an event to happen afterwards, say, oh, we didn't have video work, but we know how that would look, right? So the, there is a top priority for inspections, just like your weapon needs to be loaded, your taser needs to work, and your video better be charged. So that's the policy and procedures, but it is heavy on the supervisors. Fortunately, we have not had that issue in some time.
Okay, thank you. Code enforcement.
Yes, ma'am. Changing it to a different power point. So code enforcement, just recently, they have been restructured up under the police department. We have two new code enforcement officers that are really doing a good job in not only learning the fundamentals of the police department operations, but also code enforcement. And we take this in for this presentation because not only through the board, but through the community, we've heard loud and clear some of the concerns with changes as far as the image goes. And I think that it's important for us to help induce and talk about in moving forward with code enforcement, some of the things that we intend to do. First of all, we are currently working up on revamping an educational website. I think that through education, you can end a lot of controversy in the understanding of code enforcement. You know, they're a little bit like law enforcement, if you're not educating, you're going to catch criticisms. And code enforcement is so important to the image of the city, to reduction of crime. So it's a natural fit. Many times when our people go to community oriented policing outreach, they'll talk about an lactated building where maybe trains is or hanging out or something like that. Yes, that's law enforcement, also code enforcement's very powerful for that. So the image that, while they're working on the image that we're looking at, we look to countless agencies throughout the United States. We have one in California that we really like the look and image of, they have about eight code enforcement officers. But it is, when you see the picture come up, I see you're going to see that it is a polo look, there's not going to be police on it, it's going to have, the city implement's going to have code enforcement. Basically, we do what police officers are good at, we cheat it, we copy, you know, what someone's doing differently or what someone else is doing with a great amount of success. So this is a little bit of a soft look. The only difference here, and I brought up the shirts, because this is the shirt look that we're looking for, go on to the next, next page. And these are, they're names with code enforcement on it, and again, the city, because they're more representation of the city, not necessarily police, even though there'll be law enforcement sworn, break it down a little bit. The difference is where she's got a totally informal look, it's been our experiences, two things here that generally with wear and tear, it's tough to keep singular matching anybody's been in uniforms or services, no, it's tough to keep, to keep the coloring correct. So it's better to go ahead and get a lighter color, dark color, so take it on down. So I'm not a fan of the tactical BDU pants look for training out at the range for general public, where I think it's very important that these individuals look like, more like building inspectors with a softer look. So we're going with a casual khaki, take it on down. More of a dress khaki with that navy blue, the color of our uniforms with the code enforcement on the back. As far as communications goes, this has been a discussion that I'll have a direct line, voicemail. We hope to really implant a lot of social media out to be able to track as well as some members of the board and the mayor are on complaints through social media. So I think that that is something that we need to look at. But we do not want to set it up where our dispatchers or emergency communicators are tasked with complaints of code enforcement. It might provide a little bit of confusion there, so we want clarity. If you've got a code issue, reach out to the code enforcement department.
Have we made that arrangement? Joel, have we got a dedicated line for that at this point in time?
I don't believe we do have a dedicated line.
Okay, all right. Well, we need to, we need to work that. And I know we had a dedicated line during the early portion of the pandemic for people to call in, so there may be the ability to use that line, or, you know, I don't care what, what number it is, but just so we've got a dedicated number that shows up on the website and is available to people who are trying to locate it.
Yes, ma'am. And as soon as that line is up and operating, you'll see as long as our social media being used and everything, we'll push it out. We are partners with the media as well, so if there's any concerns, we'll make sure that citizens know how to contact us.
Okay, and I'll be sure to push it out too, but there are multiple ways that we can get that information out there.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right, any questions of the chief on that, anything else? I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. Any other questions?
No, ma'am.
I mean, any other, any other elements to it? Okay. But one of the things, I mean, we have a code enforcement vehicle, which I guess we need to get transferred over to the police department if we haven't yet, because I know it's still sitting out there, which is, it's a big vehicle with big, big laddering, so everybody's going to know what it is. But, you know, the goal is to have these folks out in the community. It's not having, sitting at city hall or sitting at the police department, the goal is to have them out in the community. And so aside from the paperwork that they will be doing in order to validate or to, you know, give the necessary paperwork, the impetus to then carry through with whatever the legal aspects of it are, they're going to be out doing what we need them to do, which is out of the community. So Alderman, Beatty, any questions from you?
So we'll have a, thank you, Mayor, we'll have a dedicated phone line that goes directly, not through police dispatch, but directly into code people.
That's correct.
Is there any kind of website, I mean, any kind of page that we can go to, we can go just code department or whatever? I mean...
We've actually got one, Joel, can you pull it up?
Does it still will be operational?
Well, in some, in some form or another, we've got one, because it's got the form on it, the complaint form on it, and we've, it's been used many times, but the phone is the, is always a backup for some folks because they are much more comfortable.
How do you get to the code? Where would you, on our website, where would you go to get them? Through departments or is it, it's not separate department, would it be under the police? Where would you, how would you get to it?
We currently have a report of concern button on the main page here that directs to if you want to fill out the online forms, and we have animal control, code enforcement, and we have many different departments represented here. So if you want to fill out a form with as much information as you can share, including picture, you can attach to these, these requests here.
But is there like, I'm sorry, I'm getting ahead of you.
Sure. And also, as the mayor was looking to, we don't have a direct number to get us straight to code enforcement right now. We rely on calling, reception, and having extensions, but we can set up a direct number very easily and we will work with the police department to do that.
And have it where it's easily attainable, somebody can find it pretty, I mean, our website has a lot of information on that.
Right, and we can also, and we'll also edit the police department page and put that contact information on there, including that direct number and the email addresses of the appropriate individuals.
It can be on the city website as well as the police website, and it can be carried, it can be linked to the utilities, it can be linked, all of it can be linked through. So we can work with everybody to make sure that's available.
Chief, I think, I understand, we've been, we're proactive right now, we're starting to identify places that are followed outside, outside our code, our standards and things. And I, and I think that's something our department, that code department needs to continue to be able to do, is be out in the community looking for things. And we're not coming down hard on people, we're not trying to do that. We just, we just understand, and I think everybody understands, lives in the city, that there's certain standards that we want our, we maintain with our, the looks of our city and things, that compliance with things, safety issues, things like that. And where, and if we're proactive in that, it won't necessarily, the burden won't be, it won't be coming on the neighbor to call or another, that kind of thing. That's uncomfortable, and I know I've had several people say that we wish code department were proactive where we didn't have to call, you know, they don't want to get back, they think, you know, somebody, I called on my neighbor two doors down, something like that for a code violation or something. So that, that'll help, but it sounds like this is going to be a good thing to see.
Yes, sir. Thank you, sir.
Alderman Vaughn?
No, ma'am, ma'am, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Little?
No, ma'am, please.
Okay, thank you, Chief, appreciate it.
Thank you.
And we will go quickly through our, our, sorry, our agenda here, and we do have a holiday on Monday, y'all, if you remember, and when people ask, there will be no trash pickup on Monday, okay? I'll try to remember to put it out, we'll put it out on Facebook and all the appropriate locations, but Monday is a holiday. All right, under the minutes, Chris, you comfortable with both sets of minutes?
Yes, ma'am.
Can we do consent for that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. At this point in time, I don't know of anything that I will, I will be mentioning, if anyone has anything they want on the agenda. has anything they want on the agenda, let me know from a comments standpoint? None? Okay. Public hearing, we're going to have, Alvin, former Alvin Dumis is going to be zooming in, because he let me know yesterday that he has COVID. So I'm putting his business out on the street now, so he's going to be zooming in for this. He will have someone there, but this will be an opportunity for us to have their annual report, as well as a, as their public hearing that they're required to have for their grant. So that will be, that will be Tuesday night. Then we've got a public hearing on rezoning lots in Cornerstone, that is a Scrivener's error. Mr. Havillin is not here, but in essence, as when we redid the UDC, there were several lots out there that were not properly, or they retained the same zoning as opposed to getting the zoning that was appropriate for that change. And so we need to, we need to do that as a part of a Scrivener's error. Any issues with that, Mr. Latimer?
No, ma'am, I think it's ready for the board's consideration.
Okay. And then we have the first public hearing, we called for it at the last board meeting, this will be the first public hearing for the group of exception to the food sale requirements. So that will just be a public hearing. Then under board business, we have actually three items, and they're all appointments for which there was no, there are no competing interests. So the first one is two vacancies on the October Hall County Heritage Museum, and we've only got one person of interest right now, we will continue to try to get folks for others, but consent for that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then we've got reappointing Russ Rogers to the municipal airport board, again, no others, so consent for that. And then we have the Golden Triangle Regional Solid Waste Management Authority, Ralph Nobles had been serving on that board for us for quite some time, he has declined to continue. And so Mary Love Taggart has said she would be willing to serve, we had not, we reached out to her, actually, I think Alvin Beatty, he reached out to her, and no one else has shown an interest, so she said she'd be willing to serve. And it's an important board. Mr. Kemp and Mr. Ware serve on it, as well as Bill Webb serve on it, they're from Starkville at this point in time. So consent for that one?
Consent.
All right, thank you. Then we have a landscape waiver. Mr. Latimer, anything in particular about, and I say that because I'm going to have to grab Mr. Havillin next time?
No, ma'am, I think it's straightforward, and whether it just meets the criteria for a variance, that'll be in the staff report.
Okay.
What, I mean, what specific?
Well, I don't know to be perfectly, I'll just hang on a second, let me see if Mr. Havillin is in here. Okay, we're, I do not recall what the landscape, what the landscape variance requirement is, so...
Can we look at that?
We can leave, sir, of course we can, we'll leave that one off, consent, and we will have an, you'll have an opportunity to look at it in your packet. We have claim stocket, which we know will not go with consent, we have financials, any issue with financials?
Yes, sir.
Consent, okay, thank you. And then Mr. Jamaica Smith is wanting to do an educational assistance program, which is wonderful, so consent for that one?
Consent.
All right, we have the chief online, do we not, Joel?
I believe we did.
Okay, he's got a number of items on here, if there's any questions about it, the commercial burn permit is for the debris associated with Cornerstone Park, consent for that one?
Consent.
Then you've got five portable, five, I'm sorry, five portable radios to be purchased with extended warranties for $9,225, consent for that one?
Consent.
Okay. Chief, as long as you're on, let me ask you, is there anything in particular you want to share with us about any of these items that are under your department? And you have to unmute yourself? Or not? You there? Okay, well...
He's on the line.
He's on the line, but that's it? All right, well, he can, I guess, tag me on the phone if he wants to. All right, so we've got two, two laptops, Joel, you coordinated with that?
Yes, ma'am.
Consent for that?
Consent.
Okay, and six complete sets of firefighter turnout gear, consent for those, and then specialty couplings, et cetera, et cetera, for fire service, so that's as far as I'm going to go.
Consent.
Consent for that? All right, thank you. Then we've got HR, we've got Mr., all right, folks, from now, we'll be having people sitting in the room with us. Is, is ma'am online?
He is not on the line.
Okay, well, I'll have that discussion later. Okay, we've got Mr. Bragg as a water distribution equipment operator.
Consent.
Consent, we've got, let me see, let's go through this, water distribution operator, radio operator, dispatcher, we've got customer service reps for the utilities department, entry level firefighter, and a maintenance worker for Starkville Utilities. Any issues with any of those from anyone?
Consent.
So we consent them? All right. And then we have, under parks, we do have Mr. Doherty here, we have requested designate Dalpho Thomas Design Studio to perform the design services. This is, Cornerstone is in process, and part of what we're trying to do is make sure that as we move along, we move as rapidly and as, and as, what, smartly as possible. So Dalpho Thomas, as you all know, redid, did the plans for our, the master plan, did the plan for Cornerstone, and as soon as Cornerstone is pretty much up and going, there are some things that we can be doing to move Sportsplex and McKee into that new position of being where we want it to go with the master plan. We've got the money and the bonds, so what we're wanting to do is get those plans ready so that we can move forward with them as Cornerstone turns those, gets the, gets the process far enough along. One of the things we are doing is the parking lot at the Sportsplex this summer, and then if we can get that designed, we can, we can get the turf, because we're going to be doing a field, you know, a turf field at the Sportsplex, we're going to be taking down the baseball fields, so we'll have an opportunity to begin to rework those so we can do it with some degree of efficiency. And, and when we're making some purchases, we can capitalize on a bulk, a bulk purchase for some of that. So this is to get those designs done so that we can move those forward. So any issues with any of that for anyone?
Mayor, we made, we made definitive plans on that north side on McKee Park, I'm taking those, oh, parks out, I still think we need to leave one of those.
Well, no, we haven't, that's what this is for.
Oh, okay. But I just, this is just retaining Dalpho Thomas.
Yes, to work through that, what those are going to look like.
Okay.
Okay, so, all righty, and then a contract for the usage of the concession stand and storage room at the Trabs Outlaw Center for Southern Foundation, they have been doing this for several years now, so this is just a repeat of what they're currently doing.
Consent.
All right, thank you. All right, under the police, we have field training certification.
Consent.
Consent for that, and then purchase of Power DMS continuing annual software, what is that about?
Consent. That is one of our distance education training, as well as our ability to keep policy procedures related to Kalia, so Kalia inspectors can come in and look at our report writing, look at what we're doing, and ensure that we're meeting the national accreditation process, but also we're able to push out, let's say, policy changes over this summer. We have the, whether it's the duty to intervene, if you see something going on, we're able to push it out, entire department, and keep track of all of our, our training and things of that nature, so that's what our DMS is.
All right, thank you, consent for that one, gentlemen?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, best bid for mobile vehicle and body worn recording systems, that's our, that's our body.
Consent.
So consent for that. All right, under code enforcement, and I have to, I have to claim my own poor follow-up, Apple Street and Vine Street both, which is the next two under code enforcement, we had until November, we had a year, and we thought we could burn them, but we can't burn them because they're too close to other buildings, and so we've got to demolish them. So it's going to go through that process, but we've got to start the process again. And so we're going to make sure that happens properly this time, and we'll get them demolished.
Okay.
So if we could consent those, it'd be great, thank you. And then under utilities, we have authorization to purchase a bobcat, this is associated with the wastewater treatment plan and the materials that they'll be working with, right? Consent for that one?
Consent.
And then proposals for an axle for dairy equipment, also, it's a replacement piece of equipment, right?
A replacement, I think.
Okay, all right, consent for that?
Consent.
All right, and we have no knowledge at this point in time of any need for an executive session, so...
Can we update real quick the recycling thing, and let you see, you kind of really, Matt, if you've got our logo, get up the axles, put people, wherever we are, just kind of bring people up to date on our recycling efforts.
Okay, well, we've got, we obviously approved the fence at the last board meeting, and that will be, that's moving forward to get that ready for the recycling program, and I think Mr. Orchetti is the one who developed the Think Green for Starkville Recycling, so we have a logo that hopefully everyone will think is attractive and understand, and now that we've branded ourselves, it will, it will be a program that we can move forward with and make sure we are offering that and getting that out there to the public. Again, social media is going to be a big deal, and we'll also, Matt, I'm sorry, Matt, Joel will also put that on our website, sanitation website, city website, so we'll have that available for people to check in with. The ware, a really good map and that kind of thing, and then we'll have that logo there as well?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right.
Mayor, a couple of things, hopefully, can we work with your department to get a push, not a push, call an insert in utility bills and do it over maybe once every, once a quarter or something, to introduce people to this new program, what, what can, the components of it, I guess you'd say. The only other thing I'd say was that we're still in negotiation on our, our contract waste program, hopefully we'll get some movement on that soon and get a, get a contract signed.
Hold them right after those work sessions done.
That's all I've got there.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? Anything? All right, guys, we've got a long weekend, I hope everyone enjoys it. Thank you, everyone, and we are, we are wrapping it up. Thank you.